Please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. This will be a somewhat abbreviated city council meeting because we will need to go into the informational portion with regard to the historical preservation district as close to seven o'clock as we can. But let me get started as soon as I can find all my stuff here. For those who didn't know, we just came out of a study meeting, work meeting, work session. That's why we're scrambling around. I don't know how many times I've told council members, do not bring open containers of liquids. I'll call the meeting to order. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda, please?
May we approve the agenda?
Is there a second? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. With regard to consent agenda, Janet, you asked to speak to the item that was added.
The amount changed from the original amount that you got on the warrant because the bill came in for a work comp claim that I needed to get paid, so I thought I'd throw it in for tonight's meeting. So the total that's on the agenda that you have in front of you now is correct with the 298,641-02.
So with regard to the items on the consent agenda, anyone have any questions with regard to any items you'd like to pull out and ask about? If not, I would move the approval of the consent agenda. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Amy Smith, second? Discussion? Go ahead.
I have one question. On page four, there is uniform commercial clothing for these pants and jackets for like $4,600. What is all that? I mean, is that?
It's the electrical department.
Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Approval of the consent agenda. We really don't have much on tonight's agenda for public comment. If anybody had anything they wanted to talk about, that's really would have to be the conditional use permit for the office area behind the county building out on the north side of town. Anybody want to say anything about that? If not, then I'm going to move on to that, and that go to James Masters.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council members. So at the last planning commission, the CUP conditional use permit was approved, okay? And member Haake moved to recommend the request for the CUP be approved with the following conditions. All right, Marion County will work with the city of Marion Building Inspector on any of the projects that would be coming up on this property. The CUP will be withdrawn if Marion County sells said property or changes the usage or fails to comply with the conditions. And three, the county agrees the parking lot will be used only for passenger vehicles and small trailers. Lou seconded that motion in favor five, in favor five, opposed zero. Motion carried. That was their recommendation to the city council on this conditional use permit.
So at this time, then, James, are you recommending that or asking the council to weigh in on that? Either approve it as recommended or send it back for modification if we see a need or something?
Correct.
Thoughts, comments, questions?
We were pretty thorough in it in there. Discussion. They threw their business on it, but it seemed pretty reasonable to me.
The, with regard to the caveats that Russ Haake put on it, the, I guess the fear is that they'd be parking big county dump trucks or something on it?
Correct, or equipment.
Okay. And then what were some of the others?
That they, they were the ones that put some building out there and do other little things, you know, storage for lawn mowers and stuff like that, you know? Which they can do that.
And that's part of the, within the recommendation?
Yes, yes.
As well as, I believe, a storm shelter possibly.
Yeah, storm shelter, some electrical things, lighting, better lighting for at night, you know, which would require electrical inspections and stuff.
And they're, they're not looking to pave that, right? They're just going to gravel it?
No, they're not going to pave that. They're just going to gravel it. They're actually going to use the culvert. The property right beside them is owned by the county also. It has a culvert there already on the backside. And then over on the east side, there's another culvert there. So there's a culvert on the north side and on the east side, and they plan to use those culverts to access those properties. So no more new culverts or anything like that.
You usually good for a question, Kevin? Nothing? So you're looking for a motion to approve at this time? Motion to accept the recommendations and adopt them, right?
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Now, any other discussion? If not, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. I just have it unanimously. And then we're back to you again, James.
Hopefully you guys had a chance to, y'all had a chance to review the little tidbits I put in the packet there, the letter that I gave you guys on this here. We have a troublesome property. Our typical method of service would be certified letter, personal service. Okay, and then we can consider it served, and we can go to court, and we say, you were served with this violation notice, and then proceed on down the line. The people live in Colorado Springs, so there's no way to go personal service. They did not pick up their mail.
I expected you to ask for permissions.
Well, the city attorney did recognize. So anyway, the city code says that the council can have it served a second way. Now, you know, granted, the city attorney says that I could serve this here, but it could be drawn up, well, the council was supposed to serve this here, so it could be dealt. Well, the city attorney says he didn't want to get into courtroom and, 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 you know, there'd be an argument saying that, well, you wasn't delegated to do that service. It was the city council that was supposed to do the second serving of this here. So that's kind of what I'm asking for tonight is a motion to delegate me to have the means to do the second service by door hangers, posting notices, personal notification, telephone calls, or first-class mail. And that way, if they refuse to pick up their first service, certified mail in Colorado Springs, I can send them a regular mail and go down and post a property, and then they'll be considered served. And I can take those minutes from the meeting and then just hang on to those if it ever came up in court.
It doesn't change us as being the governing body that's in charge of doing it. It's just we're delegating you the authority to carry it out.
Correct.
And have it in writing showing that.
Correct.
I think the city attorney is being hyper cautious, and that's not a bad thing. Because I, very rarely is when a, like, for instance, when I was with the court system, you know, the chief judge was supposed to make sure that A, B, and C happened. Well, the chief judge didn't go do it. It was delegated to either the court services chief or the court administrator or whatever. So that's pretty common stuff, but I don't, I haven't been working with that stuff. And if the city attorney thinks it would be helpful to be double safe, no harm, no foul, as far as I'm concerned. Mark, thoughts, anything?
No, we talked about, I agree with it. I might make a note of clarification. Were you a city attorney or city prosecutor?
City prosecutor. Correction. Yeah, city prosecutor, Zach Strilla.
Yeah. That's a good point. City prosecutor.
I just have a question. I know you have to have a paper trail pretty much for everything you do. How does that work then with the telephone conversation? Like, do you just record everything that it was?
Yeah, I would just document it in my notes.
Yeah.
I keep a daily journal to keep track of things like that there, so that I can go back and say, well, you know, what I did on this day.
Yeah.
Is the writing in yellow that you've shown us, that's just being added on to what's currently there?
Yeah, that would be basically the motion to delegate that I could serve the second notice by the, what's in highlighted in yellow there.
Well, I would move that we would accept the changes to the city code, chapter eight, article six of environmental code, delegating the NSD, Neighborhood Service Director, the authority to carry out the said service.
The second notification, second service, yes.
I do think it's important that we make sure that we understand. We're not saying that that's all we have to do in the way of notice. That's the backup.
Yes.
Try the more direct method first.
The first method, certified, personal service, is the first way of contact.
Is there a second?
A second.
Further discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay? I just have it. Thank you, James.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No.
You've been a pretty busy guy.
I have. No doubt about that.
Well, thank you very much.
Yes. Yeah, you know, okay, yeah.
No, we're running ahead of schedule. I can't believe we're actually, we are, yeah.
Okay, so I would just give a quick update on the dangerous structures and stuff. So things are going, going very well with the five that we selected for city court. And, you know, I've had contact from three of them, and they all have a plan in place. And I haven't heard from two, but one's probably just going to head and take care of it. I probably won't even hear from them on it, on a shed. The ten that were selected for possible resolutions to hold a hearing, I heard from the first one, that was Walton State Bank. I heard from them today. So, you know, actually just got those mailed out at the end of the week last week. So I figured my phone would blow up today, but that's going to be tomorrow.
One thing that Mark and I have talked about a little bit, James, is that, obviously, I am personally in favor of, I don't like, I don't like the word aggressive, but I guess being enthusiastic or whatever in terms of requiring people to maintain their property at least up to that minimum standard. We're not telling anybody, you can't leave your kids' truck in the yard or whatever.
Correct.
But when it gets to the point that it's a problem for your neighbors and so on, then that's when, you live in a city, it's different than living out in the country or whatever. But because we are being a little more enthusiastic with it, I, I think that some public education is helpful. So that's what Mark and I talked about was that when you identify an area that probably needs to be addressed, that, you know, we start with a letter or a visit or something that's fairly non-aggressive, but yet indicates, hey, you know, here's where we are, and then go to the next step when they don't take care of it. Does that make sense at all?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Good. I just, my fear is that it's just out of the blue, like, it's if you had, you never, ever made your kid clean their room, and then you just walked in one day and threw all their toys out the window and said, you know, well, they at least need, somebody's given them a few warnings before that happens. That's where I'm coming from. And I know that happened to Amy, so.
I would do that. Watch out, kids.
That prompt any questions or discussion on anything?
I feel like you are doing that. You give plenty of, you know, warnings and, and, you know, give them plenty of time to correct the situation before, you know, going the more, as you say, enthusiastic route.
The notice I sent out last week was a notice that they were in violation with their structures, okay? That on April the 21st, I would be coming to you guys for a resolution to hold a hearing, okay? They have that time between now and then to do something with their structure. And then even up to the point of the hearing, you know, I'm sure the hearing date will be another 60 days on down the line from, from the, for the resolution because it'll have to be posted in the paper and mailed certified mail to them and stuff. So, you know, they're looking at 120 days before we actually ever will get to a hearing on this here. And I did notify some others that, about their structures, you know, that there's no action at this time on their structures, but that we.
Okay, so give me an example. How did you do that? Just talk to them?
I sent them a letter that we are, we are aware of their structures, but at this time, we're not going to take any action. But if, if there's any, you know, that in the future, this could be revisited again, so.
So in essence, it's saying the city has noticed that your detached garage is in disrepair at this point?
Yes, possibly, possibly, yes. Yeah, and, you know, just let them know that we are aware that there could be some issues there, but at this time, that we're not pursuing anything on it, but that, that doesn't mean that we won't in the future.
That, that's really what I'm, that's where I was going, is if, I mean, obviously, if, you know, this house is about to fall down, it's going to kill somebody, that's a different thing. But if it's something that, you know, we can give them a heads up without actually writing them up, yeah, okay. That's what I like. Thank you, sir. Public forum, anything anybody wants to say about anything? I bet I know what you're going to talk about.
I want you all to know I ordered this weather.
Last week?
Yep, after last week, I ordered this weather. Just one short briefing on the airport. Our last airport board meeting was the 29th of last month, and the hot topic item was our no-fuel situation. And Mark had mentioned last month, I think it was the last meeting of last month, that Darren Newfeld is working on several KDOT grants for us, for the airport. And I believe one of those grants.
They submitted. Yeah, one was for a fuel station, comes in on the kids. And at an airport meeting, Darren felt pretty positive about it.
Right, right.
So we're hopeful here that in the next several months, we hope.
So anyway, May the 6th of last year, our fuel pump out at the airport was, was put out of service. It was found to have two major leaks. And we was, we was basically put out of service. So I was asked to come into the, I was asked by the board to come in tonight to this meeting to see if we could maybe source a fuel pump, a used fuel pump, in a, in a meter, gallons meter, that could be, that could be put on that, on that island out there at the airport, Fuel Island.
Only a couple of things. I think if we can do it, we need to find out how to do it. The fuel, we have to check some other things. If the fuel in there good and all that, I don't know.
I did, yeah, I did check with Becky earlier today, and she said that the last fuel drop out at the airport was in September 9 of 2022.
Yeah.
So that fuel, that fuel is getting kind of old out there.
Yeah.
Ab gas will actually store longer than car gas, but even it has its limits.
As I recall, that Hatfield, the thought was earlier this year, you could fill it up and it would still be okay, but I don't know anymore. We need to check that out.
Well, there's roughly, I checked the fuel out there, the, the gauge on that west tank, and there's roughly 300 gallons in that tank. So.
How big's the tank?
It's, I believe it's a thousand gallon tank.
Okay.
Yeah, a thousand gallon tank.
You could dilute that with new stuff.
Yeah.
And that might be something we could do until we find out about the grant.
So when you, when we first talked about this, I, I know that there was, I don't remember what it was. Maybe it was that kind of a stopgap measure that was discussed. But the grant was for what? A new pump?
A whole new fuel system.
Yeah, a whole new fuel system, yeah.
The board talked about that. I think you had two things going. One, that's the ultimate. If we get that funded, that would be the perfect solution. I think Buck talked in between now and at that time.
Right. Yeah, well, I understand that, yeah. But what's new about that system? I mean, are you talking new tank, new what?
Yeah, I'm not sure I know all that.
These, these brand-new fuel systems are pretty cool. The tank, the, the pump, the tank, the hose reel, the credit card reader is all on, on, it's, it's actually mounted on a skid, steel skid. And it's, it's, it's all, all one, one unit, basically. And there is no underground piping or anything like that.
Wow.
I believe the answer is everything is new.
Yeah.
Yeah, everything is new, yeah.
As I recall, again, this is off memory, I think Darren, he'll be here a little bit later, I think it was a 90-10 grant out there or something.
Yeah, I think all those KDOT grants are 90-10, the aviation, KDOT aviation grants.
But you don't have, do you? I know, Zach, you've worked with Darren for a long time, but are those, like, do we know that, okay, they do, they make that decision in May of every year?
I'm not sure off the top of my head.
I think, I think probably April, May. And again, Darren highlighted to the board the level of what's important to him, and that did seem to rate toward the, if there's no fuel at the field, we're very hopeful that will go well.
So what's the timeline if, let's say it's May, and you find out, yep, we got it? What's the timeline from then?
I'm not sure that.
See, that's what our worry, that's what our worry is on, on the board, is that if, if we do get the grant, that'd be great. But we could still be looking at a year or two, you know, prior to getting that system out there.
I don't know if it'd be quite that long. I guess it can be. I would hope by the end of the year, you have a new fuel system. That'd be very optimistic. We need to verify that.
Okay, so that's, that's kind of what I needed. You're thinking that it would be optimistic to think we'd have it before 2026?
I mean, I'm very hopeful, yeah. I mean, I don't know for sure. I would like to think, I'm guessing with my, on different grants I've worked with them on, they'll announce it, you have to sign some forms, you'll probably have to go through a little bidding process, and then you have to have it installed. Just, I'd just think that probably a six-month process right there, you know?
So what's bad out there now? Is it just the dispenser itself or the pump unit or the?
Yes, it was the, the actual fuel, the actual fuel pump was undergoing a calibration process, testing process, and during that process, that's when it was found to have these two leaks. The, the hose is completely shot, dry routed and split open. And the actual suction pump that is down in the cabinet of the, of the pump housing was, was just spraying fuel all over the place. So that's why we was put out of business.
And Buck, we're at the same age. Correct me if my memory is wrong. As I recall, the thought was, we had a couple of bids. It seemed like just for the fuel alone was like $10,000 to $12,000. We had these additional things.
Yeah.
So the thought was, let's try to get the new whole system. Because with the money we'd have to put into that grant would be probably less than we'd have to do to fix that. That's the thought process. In the meantime, Buck, correct, we haven't had fuel, which is not a good thing.
Yeah, that, we was put out of, out of, out of business on May the 6th. And on May the 20th, we did get a quote to put a new pump in, turnkey project, but it was like $12,547 for just a basic fuel pump. And we, you know, we, we thought that was just kind of outrageous pricing.
Was that, was it a new one or was that a used?
Brand-new one, yeah.
So are you guys willing to look for a used pump or were you asking us to do that?
That's what we would like to do. We would like to, to go ahead and, and start looking for one, a used pump. And if we could find one, I guess then work with Mark to see if maybe we could get a purchase.
And I'll, and I'll get some more, at the next meeting, we'll have an update. I'll get some, I'll talk to Buck and his folks and also talk to Darren. Answer some of your questions.
I will say that the, it's on more than one thing, and I don't, I'd like to find a bad guy, but I really don't think there is a bad guy. But they have been waiting, including the door on his own hangar.
It's been a struggle.
So I appreciate the patience, but I have no problem with, you know, check it out, see what we can get one for. I would assume if we get one and it works, then we can use it till we get, hopefully, the new system, and then maybe we can sell it to somebody else.
How many dollars worth of fuel is 300 gallons of that type of fuel?
Yeah, the fuel is running 580 a gallon right now. So, and we've got roughly 300, 300 gallons plus or minus in that west tank out there. So that's a pretty good, pretty good chunk of change.
Now, if you guys on the board would be willing to volunteer, you know, certain times, we could get a long hose, put it down there and let you siphon that.
Get one of those hand pumps.
Yeah, okay.
Start hand pumping it out. Okay, that's all I had, everybody.
I don't think, I don't hear anyone that has an objection to exploring that option.
Okay.
Mark's your contact guy.
Okay, I'll, I'll go back, and I don't know if we're going to have an airport board meeting this month or not, probably not. But we'll have one in March for sure. So I'll go back to the guys and say we just need to start looking.
That's good. Thank you.
Thanks, Buck.
Thanks, all.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public forum? All right, department, anything departments? Let's go down to you, Tim, for the council.
I do not have anything to report on tonight.
Kevin? Just noting that we just got out of the study session, work session. I thought we had, it was a good session. I thought it went well. Talked about a lot of things that are exciting and some that are scary. Okay?
I don't have anything.
Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll second that.
Motion and second, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. I just have it unanimously. So coming up here, hopefully, real quickly, we will have Mr. Moore, Ben Moore here to talk about the historic preservation district project that we are proposing.
So we're a team on this project, so I'm just the guy who sold it a little bit. But Taylor and Christie, we, we work collaboratively together on all these projects that we do. So you might see Christie, or you might see me, or you might see Taylor working on these things, and we all work together. And lots of experience in the room, and we've done this several times. And we think we can show you why it helps small communities. It gives a tool in the tool bucket for redevelopment. And I think you need about 10 tools, but this is just one. And that's the first step, though, and it's a great, a great way to start, start this. Do the down one. There we go. All right. So Chris, Chris. There we go. All right. So Chris, Christie, it's some of these terms that.
I'm, these are really tiny, so I'm glad people have pronounced. Um, I'm Christie Davis. I grew up in Harvey County, so forgive me, right down the road. I live in Chase County. I've worked in every county in Kansas. I've worked with Ben on a lot of projects, um, for at least twenty years now. And I've done quite a bit of work in, in Marion County, including, uh, Marion, Holmesboro, and, and, uh, Lawrence, the P body, I guess, all your, all your main, main communities here. So I appreciate the opportunity to, to provide some information and answer any questions. Um, I worked with, um, Ben Moore Studio on a downtown survey, and I was really kind of inspired by the work that, that, um, Randy's done. He may never forgive me for not returning his texts. Um, inspired by the work that, that he was doing at the time. Um, and at that time, you know, we did a lot of, we did a lot of civic engagement at that time. But it's been a while. It actually was pre-pandemic.
Yeah, it was, we, we look back, twenty nineteen, that seems like eons ago.
It does now. I mean, yeah, five years, a lot has changed since then. And one of the things that has changed, um, at that time, um, you know, we, we have, you know, prepared this survey, we made recommendations for a district. Great. But we didn't proceed with that as a community, um, but since then, uh, about three years ago, we got legislation passed in the Kansas Legislature that increases the rehab tax credit for rural communities. Any community under ninety-five hundred gets an enhanced credit. So Mark had a lot of experience in Emporia. We've worked on a lot of those projects. Right now, they're getting a historic tax credit of thirty percent, a state credit. For communities under ninety-five hundred, it's forty percent, which makes a huge difference. In addition to working with Ben on a lot of these projects, um, I hired Ben to work on some of my projects. So my husband and I own a laundromat in, um, downtown Cottonwood Falls, and I own an old bank building in Council Grove. Ben was our, um, architect on those. Um, needless to say, we did not have the forty percent tax credit yet, and, um, those have been fun hobby projects for me. Um, we call them businesses. Um, but anyway, they're, they meet a community need, and they, uh, were, were buildings that were, were threatened, and, um, in particular with the laundromat, it was something that was identified as a need. So these incentives make those kinds of projects possible. Um, you have a sheet that has some terms on it. You know, we throw around a lot of words, preservation, rehabilitation, restoration, lots of words. In general, we call it, you know, preservation. When we're working in, in downtowns on buildings, we're often doing what we would call rehabilitation, which is making sure you're not, you're not preserving the building to be the White House or some, you know, internationally known landmark. It is, it is rehabbing the building for a current use. That's most of the work that we have done.
Turning something that used to be a, a bank into apartments is a good example of that, you know? Changing that, and you gotta modify a lot of things in it to make it work. New HVAC, new wiring, life safety things.
Right, so this is, this recognition that these buildings aren't museum pieces, that there's value in them if you continue to use them. Okay, so that's most of the work that we do.
From, from a city's perspective too, when you reuse something, you guys don't have to put in new water lines, new sewer lines, they're already there. So when you have to extend those out, that's a lot of dollars. So it's a great way to be fiscally responsible as a city.
So these are, this is a quote government program, uh, they're talking about tax credits in particular, because that's why a lot of downtowns have pursued listing of downtown historic districts is to qualify, um, for this funding. Um, it's been around for over twenty years. Um, it was the first thing I did in my grown, the first grown-up job was to create this program. And since then, there's been about a billion dollars invested in historic properties in Kansas, um, because of the program. We mentioned, you know, here, we throw around these, uh, acronyms, cause I don't like them either, but when we talk about SHPO, it's State Historic Preservation Office, um, we're gonna show you some examples of inventory. We wanna show you the work that we did for the survey in twenty nineteen that is the basis for any possible historic district nomination. Um, and then, uh, I'll, I'll define kind of what a historic district is, because I don't know that everybody, if you haven't worked with them, you may not know.
It's all weird terms, and I, we've just found it's helpful to put some of those on paper so you guys can help, you know, understand what, what we're talking about, because it, it's Greek, basically.
So what often happens in downtown, you have like a, you have like a, a Keystone building, right, in your downtown? And it may be listed on the National Register on its own, because it has, you know, it meets a lot of requirements as far as it's got historic integrity. It's eligible because it's a great example of a particular kind of architecture, or it's historically significant for the development of the community. Not every building, though, in your downtown is eligible for individual listing. And so historic districts are one efficient way to look at an area, like a commercial business district or downtown, and identify within that area properties that would contribute to a historic district. And that means that they would qualify, that means they would qualify for funding. Um, so in a downtown, you might have a building that was built in nineteen eighty, um, wouldn't contribute to a historic district, but you might have fifty properties within a boundary, and forty-five of them are contributors, meaning they're over fifty years old and they meet some integrity requirements. Those are the properties within a district then, it would qualify for funding without listing every single building separately.
Ba- basically, in a nutshell, what a district does to, it saves those individual property owners quite a bit of dollars. Cause then they don't have to hire, um, somebody as smart as Christie to write that up individually, a- and it's a lot of work. And so what, what the attempt is here is to do it for the whole district, and it makes the threshold a little lower, since you're doing a whole district. And, um, it just makes it a lot simpler, and it's easier for those, you know, a small project or a large project to happen.
Well, one of the terms on there was nomination. So, uh, when we talk about a historic district domination or a national register domination, that's the paperwork that you fill out to get a, a district or a property designated. So that's what we're talking about with that. We, in twenty nineteen, did a lot of survey work, obviously that needs to be updated, but we did a lot of kind of prep work, but did not pre- prepare an actual nomination. Talked a little bit about how districts might have a number of properties. Some of them are contributing, some are non-contributing. That gives you an idea. Again, you got a building that's under fifty years old, it's not gonna be a contributor, um, to the district. Um, talked a little bit about historic tax credits. Tax credits are, um, an interesting topic. Some of you may be familiar with the community service credit, and there's some other tax credit programs. Um, with the rehabilitation tax credits in Kansas, um, our programs in Kansas are the envy of the country when it comes to historic preservation. Um, a rehab tax credit is, uh, it's, it's allocated based on an ownership percentage. So if you, if you do a hundred thousand dollar project in a downtown building and you're in a community under ninety-five hundred, you can qualify for a tax credit equal to forty percent of your qualified expenditures. So on a hundred thousand dollar project, you get forty thousand dollars. Most of us don't have that kind of state tax liability. But the great thing about this program is that these historic tax credits are transferable. You can sell them to people who have the tax liability. Banks, insurance companies, et cetera, and then use that money to leverage your next project. Anything else on that?
So, so, so kind of the process to get a district nomination, the first step, you guys did in twenty nineteen, which was an initial survey of the, of potential buildings and that type of stuff. We'll go through that a little more in detail. Um, but the next steps, which takes about twelve to eighteen months, depending on how, how you guys decide to progress through the process, um, first thing is having a public meeting. You know, so we, the desire always from the state's end of things is to have property owners engaged in the process. Make sure they want to have a district and to understand what that means. It's real important. Then, um, we'll, we'll have a meeting with SHPO, again, one of those terms, the Historic Society, um, to talk about the boundary. We're gonna talk a little bit about the boundary tonight and kind of get your guys' input and what we did in twenty nineteen about the boundary. But SHPO has a role in that. Ultimately, they get to say yes, no, maybe so, um, type of thing. And, um, so we'll, we'll go through that, and then we'll update kind of the inventory. I mean, look at the buildings again. Hey, what's changed since twenty nineteen? What hasn't? Those type of things. Um, and then, uh, we'll, we'll draft the, the nomination and submit a draft to the state. They'll send back feedbacks that, no, we wanna change X, Y, and Z. We'll hold another public meeting during that process too. And then we'll submit a final to the, to the state, and then it goes to a board for review. That's kind of the nutshell of the process. So we're still at the beginning, trying to get your guys' input, um, which is a big part of this.
All right. Well, in, in twenty nineteen, as we said before, we did a, a survey. Some of you may have, may remember us walking around and taking pictures downtown. We were looking at a commercial, you know, business area. So we were trying to survey, um, everything within your kind of central business district that, uh, generally had a commercial purpose. Okay, so we didn't, we, we may have touched on a couple of residential properties, but this is, this shows, uh, it might be better in your handouts. But you can see the boundary, um, in downtown, the area that we surveyed in twenty nineteen. Um, so it was pretty comprehensive. We would, we were looking at everything we did, at everything we could see in downtown that would fall into a commercial, um, this, might fall into a historic district. Um, next slide. This next slide, we talked a little bit about this idea of when you survey buildings, you classify them as either contributors or non-contributors to a district. This is a map, and again, this needs to be reviewed and updated, but it shows kind of the, the, the parcels that are dark. Those are parcels that, um, have properties that would be considered contributors to the district.
So the big deal to that, again, from the dollars later, that we'll look at, an example is you can get tax credits for a contributor. Non-contributor, you can't.
With some exceptions, and Ben's gonna show you a really great, uh, project, the Gundin. Remember that building? All right. Um, the Gundin in Emporia. Um, is it still the Gundin? It's something else now. There's no Gundin anymore?
There's not. It's, it's a doctor's office.
Okay, all right. See, I'm still behind, but, um, that place was there for a long time.
The new doctor's is really cool.
Yeah, yeah. We have pictures instead of, yeah. As far as contributors and non-contributors, I mean, it may be because your building is, is fewer than fifty years old. It may be that somebody put a, you know, aluminum facade on it. You know, did something that would affect the integrity of the building. So there are times when those things are reversible. And if you reverse them, you can turn a non-contributing building into a contributor. And I wanna say too, the, the way this map, the way we identify boundaries of a historic district is, we survey a really broad area. We see where the contributors and non-contributors lie, and we try to create kind of a concentrated area of contributors. Because if you've got a boundary and everything around the edge is a non-contributor, they're gonna want you to narrow down, to narrow down that area anyway.
And you can, I, I know there's discussion about change, trying to change the, the boundary a little bit. This was the feedback we got in twenty nineteen. And so, um, I suspect that's what the state would want, but, um, we wanna get your guys' input on that as well, to see.
And it's pretty common, like, where, we'll have a historic district and somebody, you know, they got a, they got a house right on the edge of it and they wanna be included. Well, it's a, it's a downtown district. It's a commercial business district type of district. You can't really justify, like, grabbing a house here and there. Um, without, uh, you know, without some justification, so. But, all right, so this is the love acronyms, HRI, Kansas Historic Resources Inventory. It's an inventory of every building that's ever been surveyed in the state of Kansas. And there are what, a hundred thousand by now?
Oh, it's, it's phenomenal.
So when I started, it was less than fifty thousand, so we've, we've done some work. But we have been surveying, um, with, with, uh, federal dollars mostly in Kansas. We've been surveying historic properties since the late nineteen sixties. Obviously, there's been a lot of change since then. The properties have come and gone. Um, but this is the state's kind of database of everything that's in inventory. You can go online to the, to KHRI, and you can find lots of properties, but you can see everything that we've done. Because when we did the survey in twenty nineteen, we uploaded it to that database. So photos, mapping, um, you'll see, there's see that really long photograph. We, we do an architectural, we did an architectural description and a history of each of these, um, or preliminary history of each of these as part of that project. That's all in a database so that folks can access it.
And that was almost part of that initial survey we did, so you guys, anybody can access that.
So the difference between that and kind of moving to an actual district nomination is the nomination part. And surprise, surprise, it's another government forum.
Yeah.
Um, when you write a national register nomination, whether it's for an individual property or a district, there's two, generally two main parts to it. Uh, a description, so like a narrative description of the building or the district, and then a history. So with a historic district, what we'll look at is, um, we will write a summary, history of the community, right? And how downtown developed over time as a whole. And then for each property, whether it's a contributor or non-contributor, we'll write an architectural description and a history of that property. And then on here, there's information about the address, the date of construction, you know, try and get everything in one place, in one document. Um, and then we put mapping with that too, and then photographic documentation. These nominations go to, um, in every state, they go to a state preservation office. Those are offices that are funded through, um, through state dollars, but also federal dollars as well, through the National Historic Preservation Act. They review them at the staff level, and then they go to historic sites, um, to a board review. In the case of districts, the goal is, um, so if you, if you have a district and you have ten property owners, okay? And, you know, eight of them are adamantly opposed to the district, and they, they can file, um, you know, they, they can file an objection, and that can take, that can take the whole thing. The idea is you really want most of the people, the majority of the people within that area, to be, to be supportive of the project moving forward.
So why would people be supportive? Cause there's some cool benefits, and, um, those are the tax credits. The federal and state historic tax credits. There also is some local control. Um, so, um, if, if you've got a property owner and they wanna do something, and the historic, the SHPO says, hey, no, you can't do that. The city council can override that, and they could say, yes, they can, Mary. Um, you, you do not ever have access to the historic tax credits on that project then. Other people's money, other people's rules, that's the thing to remember on that. Um, that is what it is, but there is local control. And I've seen that used in Emporia several times, Council Grove, it just happens. There's certain things that somebody locally wants to do, and it's a great thing that our state allows. So it's a big deal. And, but it's always important to know you do have local control. Oh, um, so we, we talked about the forty percent of the QRE with, so not every dollar that you spend on, um, on a building. And you, you've probably explained this thousands more times than I have.
When we say qualified rehab expenditures, so the way the tax credit program works is it identifies some things as qualified based on a taxation definition that was established by the IRS and the Department of Revenue uses. So for instance, it, it needs to be a capital expense. If you go into an old building and, and you're converting it to apartments, and the only thing you're doing is putting new appliances in, that won't qualify, because that's equipment, it's not a capital investment. Um, so there's certain things that are qualified and unqualified. Um, in general, with historic buildings, you're looking at the, the, um, footprint of the building itself and work on that building. Site work, which isn't such a big deal when you're in a downtown, but, but site work is something that doesn't ordinarily qualify. If you've got a, um, let's say you have a house, and it's a really old house, and it doesn't, you know, have appropriate restroom, and you've gotta make an addition to it, great, there's a way to do that and meet the preservation requirements. But you're expanding the footprint, so that work on new construction won't qualify. Really aimed at historic preservation, and it's aimed at projects that impact, um, your building.
There's strategies for it, so if you had to put an elevator in a downtown building, sometimes it's easier to do an addition, but you wouldn't get tax credits on that. But if you put it internally, you would. So there's. So there's certain strategies that can help the bottom line on that. Okay, I'm going to do an example.
I'm high tech, I'm glad everybody has the print.
Yeah. Just kind of to walk through, to help understand the historic tax credits. This is development costs, what it would cost to buy a building, all the different soften costs that come up. And then we've got on there, for the actual rehabilitation, about 1.8 million. So we're selling about 8,000 square foot building, $225 a square foot on that kind of project. So putting in, you know, 2.7 million dollars, which sounds like, that's crazy numbers, right? But toilets cost the same in Marion as they do in Kansas City. They just do. And that's one of the great things about the tax credits. So, you know, listed on here, you know, we've got everything that you're going to see on a project, you know, appraisal cost, construction interest, all those things. It adds up. What we've done on this next one is look at what you can get from a federal and a state tax credit on that giant 2.7 million dollar project. And we've looked at it, like, how much of it would equal the QRE? So what you, you know, minus the appliances, there's all these little things that don't count, right? So about $438,000 in federal tax credits, and then almost $900,000 in state. So almost 1.3 million dollars in tax credits, which is, that's almost 50%, right? And if you look at the top, there's the formula we put in there. And you'll see something that's called sale amount. That's the amount that, kind of the going rate. So if I'm selling tax credits to Central National Bank, you know, they're buying them at 92 cents on the dollar or something like that. The federal ones, you can't sell, they can't be syndicated, which is a fancy lawyer term for selling them, essentially. But those sell at a lower rate, about 80 cents on the dollar.
Federal credits are allocated based on an ownership percentage, so you actually, if you're bringing on somebody who wants, you know, who has that kind of liability, then they're, they have ownership of the project, and it can be a challenge, especially when you're working on small town projects, because, you know, we're, you're not going to have the returns that you might on an urban project or on a really large project. So it's just something to keep in mind.
But depending on your bank, I know there's some regional banks that do look at that in terms of the appraisal. They'll appraise the tax credit value. So we know the issue in most small towns is, hey, when you do a commercial appraisal, they look at a sales approach, income approach, cost approach. And they do kind of a average of those three. And so it never hits what the cost is. It's always too low. When you add in the value of the tax credits, it can help get you over that hump.
Helps leverage the financing, yeah, give you, yeah, more value at the end. Okay, I have to say it, Ben, because these numbers are not from my project, but that photo is. That's the bank building in, yeah, you know, James? Bank building in downtown Council Grove, that's the kitchen. Every time we go in there, my husband says, why can't we live here? And I say, because we can't afford to live here. But beautiful project that Ben and his team helped on, and took a building that was mostly vacant for 40 years and rehabbed it. So it was, and it was a challenge, but a beautiful project, fun project.
Well, when you start to look at some of those numbers, you know, so we've got on here what I would assume the appraisal would come in at, on a construction cost like that, it'd probably come in low, come in at 1.6 million. And most banks will do 80%, loan to value on that. So you could only get, on your permanent loan, 1.3 million. And with the tax credits, though, they would, again, do an 80% loan to value on those. So you couldn't get money upfront on the whole value, you would get to 2.3 million.
Helps you bridge that financing gap.
Right, so then what you have to put in, and the bank's going to make you put in 20% of the total project anyway, you're over what you got to have, and that's the beauty on this. It really helps get you there. And that's without any of the other incentives that are a huge deal. This is just one tool, because, you know, RHID is huge. Industrial Revenue Bond is huge for these kind of projects, too.
Neighborhood utilization program.
Yeah. And I know in town, you've done some CDBG projects before in the downtown. Those are great, and they've left the amount on those as well, so that they're at 300,000 instead of 250,000. But all those components can help bridge that gap. Because depending on the bank that you're working with, some of those might see the grant has cash, some of them might not. It just depends on their risk tolerance.
Oh, the Gundin.
Yeah, this is the Gundin. So on the left, that was a non-contributor in the Emporia Downtown Historic District. They took off the siding and all that, and underneath was this brick facade. The glass wasn't there or anything, but once the brick got exposed, they switched it from being a non-contributor to a contributor.
Gundin?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was.
Yeah, in downtown Emporia.
That's what it was. That's a doctor's office.
Yeah, it's somewhere.
He got a lot of tax credits. He didn't get tax credits for pulling the stuff off, but he got it on the rest of the project, which was a big deal.
We've also worked on some other projects with, I've actually, I've worked on several where there were facades, and it's pretty amazing when these things come down. You just never know what you're going to find, and sometimes you get really lucky.
Yeah, this was not what we expected. We were, we thought it was on, like, stuccoed on the masonry, and it was going to be a nightmare. And they pulled it off, and we're like, oh.
I've done it where it did have stucco on the masonry, and we had to take it off.
Is this on Main Street, or what is it?
Yeah, on commercial, Emporia. That's what, 900 block?
On the 700 block.
700, yeah, okay.
I think now Dr. Waters has an officer.
That's right.
And a pimp person, pimp doctor or somebody else.
708.
So next steps, what are the next steps? After tonight's meeting, we're going to meet with shippo about the boundary. We're going to hear from you guys here in a second on what we all think. And then we're going to go through these steps. And we're going to have another public meeting at some point as well to, because it always takes a while to digest things. People come back with different questions, that type of thing. So we really want to hear from you all and ask the questions, because it's important to know what questions there are so we can help you guys understand. Because my experience, it is important in a small community to have a historic district. Because it just helps financially for a project's cash flow, you really have to have it. Big word of questions. Yes, sir.
So if I, and I don't, but if I had a non-contributing building within the boundary of the district, what's the downside for it, other than that I don't get a credit?
There is no, in my opinion, no downside. When a building permit is pulled, it still, it still goes to the state or state law review, no matter what.
But you're probably, I mean, depending on what requires it, you're probably dealing with that anyway because they're individually, well, I guess, they don't really matter to you.
So.
Probably dealt with that in the past.
And again, if something would come up, that's where the city council could say, hey, no, we're still doing this. But on a non-contributor, it's usually a 32nd review.
And usually it's with work on the exterior. I mean, they're, they're not going to be concerned about what happens on the inside, because the idea is the impact on the district as a whole.
And we just did a project in Emporia Police Station, it's in the civic authority room in the basement. And it is drop ceilings, it wasn't chemical units, it was bulletproof glass, it was cabinets. That was a historic project. It was not doing anything different. Because that's the condition they were dealing with to start with. So that's always something they take into account.
I think that's the other side of my question. If it's not a contributing building, that doesn't matter much. If you are a contributing building, you're saying that it doesn't mean that you can't, you have to put in historic doorknobs on every floor or whatever.
You're only going to get, so you can decide, hey, we're not applying for any of this funding, right? We're going to do it our way. If you're doing a project that doesn't require a permit, which is probably a lot of projects in Marion, I would guess. I mean, I live in Codwood Falls, we built a laundromat without a permit. Anyway, but, but, well, no, I mean, it just, you know, but it wasn't the same, you know, the same plan or anything. But doorknob, and that's not the kind of thing that's going to tip off a permit and tip off a review. But if you have a contributor and you want to qualify for the tax credits, then you're going to want a project that meets the standards so that you get the tax credits and that those will be reviewed.
And I was just trying to say that you can get tax, like, to this, this space, this was renovated. You can get tax credits on this, going back with the life materials that are here.
Ben, on that example in Emporia PD, did you get money back?
Yes, 30%.
How much of the project?
It was about $250,000.
I know 10 years ago, 15 years ago, they put air conditioning in the gym, and that was all above the ceiling, it was about half a million dollars. I had them run it, but you could be 25%.
Yeah, yeah.
When it was all said and done, the city spent 500,000, we pre-certified it. We got 125 back in tax, we had stolen, at 92%, we got about 115,000 cash, simply because Casey Woods, who came over here, they told us to fill out a form.
Yeah.
That was the easiest project, yeah.
That was the first one that I spent my whole life for a lot of money.
And I would just point out, for local governments, the state historic tax credits are a great tool that way. You only have to spend more than $5,000 to meet that threshold.
Which is everything.
That's everything. Air conditioner goes out, you can do it. And it's not complicated to do. And the federal one, it's a little more challenging to get done. Typically, you have to spend more than what you purchased the building for. So it's got to be a substantial project, typically.
And also, it's for income producing problems, always. So, yeah, with municipal, you're looking at state credits. And that's also now, it's, so here, because you're a town that's under 9,500, it would also be 40%.
Not on that with the non-contributing ones. So is there any negative drawbacks to someone within the boundary of doing new construction? There wouldn't be any restrictions on that so much?
If it requires a permit in the boundaries of the district, it would get reviewed under the state preservation statute. But that's what we're talking about with local control.
They're not getting money anyway.
Usually when somebody's, usually when somebody's doing a new building within a downtown historic district, they're going to do something that is consistent with that district, right? Because there's value in that, but it can be. But if you wanted to do something nuts, that, somebody said, yeah, if somebody said no, it gets appealed, if it gets reviewed because you're in a district boundary and requires a permit, it can be appealed to the local governing body, and they make the final decision.
You know, I would just, again, point to Emporia, that there's been several downtown infill projects there. What happened, Corey Higgs multi-family projects, I mean, they've all, they're all in the historic district, so.
And there's always a way to do it consistently.
I just know there may be drawbacks to someone who's going to build something there. As a construction, there would be a lot of things.
Well, I would mean, it would get reviewed if you're in the boundaries, but in that case, because you're not getting money, it can be appealed back to the local.
So like on that boundary where you said that could be done differently, like going up Main Street, could you extend it to get, like, the museum and, like, the Hill School Building and the brick building in there?
We want to go back to the.
Yeah, we can go back to that.
The map.
So when we survey, we did survey a broader area. The proposed boundary that we came up with in 2019 was based on, like, a preponderance of contributors. That's probably going to need to be reevaluated. I will say, you mentioned the school building, I mean, it depends on the nature of the district. Usually with a downtown historic district, you're really focused on commercial buildings, and you're not likely to pull in a school building, although we did it in Emporia.
Except for Christie, the only, the only challenge that is, the Hill Building's already on the national register.
Oh, it's individually listed, okay.
So, you know, to Kevin's question, extending on up to Hill to the High School Building, there may be some value in that because of, you know, the way things get.
There's possibilities there, I will say. In general, we try to focus on commercial districts. But I made a case in Emporia, when I did the downtown district there, we wanted Louder North and Louder South to be included, those were the two huge school buildings that are on Sixth Street, because there were major redevelopments being planned, and it was easier just to kind of pull it all together. And I, and I fought on that one, and we got it.
I think the school board has already been, I think they've already used some historic tax credits in some of the things they've done with the Hill Building.
I think one thing, like, just for a reference, when we're talking about the district, if we were just to include the museum, the museum is, like, here. So we would, you know, we'd just go down the street.
It's already listed, though.
And include the museum.
It's listed, too, isn't it?
The museum is, I'm not sure.
The church, the old church building. It's individually listed. Because I was in there not too long, yeah, we can check it.
Like that stone building that is just up the hill? Because I mean, I know, I read in the paper, the school has to do something heat-wise, it's like.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
So then they could use the tax credits, but they could sell them as a school district.
Exactly, and I'll tell you, look at, if you ever want to see a community that knows how to use these for schools, Independence Kansas, they basically rehab all of their historic school buildings. They made a choice to rehab those instead of building new because of the tax credits, and they sold them.
But I think what you're saying, I'm not sure, mate, is that since the Hill Building, at least, is already on the register, they can.
It's already eligible.
But the High School Building's not.
I talked to Dustin today, and whether or not they were interested in us trying to pull them in, I mean, simple work.
It also, it doesn't mean that, it doesn't conclude they're listing it individually in the future. There's a lot more schools that are being listed now because that credit went from 25% to 40%. It makes a difference when they're making choices, it makes a difference.
So we can find out with the, I think, I think.
I'm looking right now, I'm, you don't think it is?
The museum?
Yeah.
On the state historic registers, over your asking? No, it's not.
I'm going to do.
I have another question when you get minutes.
Okay, so these are the properties, there are nine, just for fun. There are nine buildings in Marion that are listed. One is Bound Corby School. That was a historic tax credit project, okay? Donaldson Hosmer Building, the Elgin Hotel, I was the consultant on that when that was rehabbed. The First Presbyterian Church, Hill Grade School. There's an archaeological district. Marion County, that's outside of town, but Marion County Courthouse. Marion County Park and Lake, so that was a New Deal era thing, and that's a more restructured thing. Marion County Poor Farm. So those are the properties that are listed and would already be eligible. So I'm surprised.
Yeah, it just never had.
That is a beautiful, the interior of that view, that building is just gorgeous, too. That would be something to look at. I know when we did, so I've done, I don't know how many of these, a lot. When we did Emporia, we did have churches that were included kind of within that commercial business district. Because historically, with Emporia, it was very focused around Sixth Street. And then in the early 20th century, ESU went namebusters, when they, you know, the Kansas State Teachers College. And so downtown started marching north. Well, there were residential neighborhoods with churches. The churches remained, the homes removed, and so they were kind of integrated into that business district, and we included them as contributors when we listed that one. Same thing in, yeah, anyway, same thing at some other.
We've got a historic home that is just south of the west end of the district. It recently sold. I don't believe that the people that bought it are going to use it as a private residence. But it's a very historic site, and I wondered about bringing that in.
I think it's worth looking at. It is just a huge challenge when you start kind of cherry picking individual houses on the outskirts of it.
Sure.
Especially when it is.
If you look where it's located, if it's just right there.
It's certainly something we can look at. The truth is, we could probably survey it, because I know we pinched a little beyond the boundaries. But I'm just saying, ordinarily, we're looking at justification through the state preservation office, and generally, we're. and generally, with commercial districts, there are rare exceptions, but, you know, if it's well within, the boundary's gonna make sense, yes, but if it's on the outskirts, it's like, then which houses do you choose?
No, no, there's no other homes around there.
And it doesn't, and you can't, just so you know.
The Billings Place.
You can also, many communities, I mean, I'm thinking of Newton. Newton has more residential historic districts.
Right.
I, I did the original survey for that, and did the nominations for those. So, you can have residential districts as well.
Right, yeah. It's just, you know, it was one of our first sellers.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's worth looking at, I just, I don't wanna give you false hope.
Yeah.
Well, the property I'd like to, is just north of Darren's office. That's a vacant house that's, it needs a lot of work, and it may not be saved unless there's something like that could be done.
That's true. So, could, maybe, I, I mean, I know we've been working with Mark, if that's something Mark could give us, a list, if, if folks have particular properties that are interested in, we can look at them and see if they've been surveyed and kind of give you an idea. It's just, I just don't, I just don't wanna promise, you know.
Right, I'd just like it to be considered on the list, because it's, it's so prominent right from the park.
Always worth looking at, always worth looking.
I've got no problem when we're talking to shippo to talk about, "Hey, here's three, what do you guys think?", that type of thing, and get their feedback.
And we'll make, and we'll make the best case.
There's a church right next to it that might be their advantage.
We'll make the best case we can, they have, you know.
Yeah. I, I just wanna throw it out, because I don't, I wouldn't wanna be sad.
That's the best kind of problem you could have, that more people want to be in the district.
Yeah.
It's great.
The old Billings Place actually used to have a community park around it. I mean, it, yeah, it's worth you looking at.
Okay, well, with that, I'm trying to remember, I'm sure that I know.
You can't see it hardly from the street.
Okay, I might know the building if I saw it, but I don't.
It's a two-story stone house, south of Main Street.
It's not visible from the street.
Okay.
It is kind of.
Okay, okay, so, I guess, if, if Mark, you would help on the kind of the list of things that are interested us, just so that we can give you a take on it and answer those questions.
I, I do have one more question, though. If we add anything, do we have to redo anything that we've already done?
What do you mean?
In the process, would it, would it back us up on the timeline?
As far as a rehab project, or?
As far as the time, timeline is just progressing.
We'd, we'd have to survey those buildings that we didn't survey.
What I'm saying is, let's find out what they are, because it's possible, I know that we surveyed a couple residential buildings just because they were put away, right? They were, they're kind of surrounded. Um, we need to find out if they've been surveyed, and then we need to, to do an analysis.
Yeah, I just didn't know it was gonna say this back a year or something.
Well, I mean, there's gonna be some updates that needs to happen. And so, the question is whether we surveyed it or not, and, and what that looks like, and whether we think we can justify it within the boundaries.
Thank you.
You guys have any?
Those are great problems.
Any tax credit questions or anything like that to help understand how those work, or?
Since the Department of Revenue system, selling those to, no.
If you have a project that is under a million dollars, then the, the numbers are reviewed by the preservation office to review all that. If you have a larger project, you submit schedules, where they, they look at your expenses, and the Department of Revenue does look at those for those larger projects. And usually what they're looking for is making sure you're not cleaning stuff that's on, you know, that's, that's not eligible expense.
Right.
Yes, and I guess, whenever I come out, you know, while you're upfront and honest and got all the information, then usually you're not gonna have a problem. I'm quite proud. I have a question, okay, how many of your own buildings in downtown? How many are gonna buy buildings after this?
Some did her for sale.
So, it's about half and half, yeah.
There, there are a couple that are in, this could help them go over, help to sell.
Yeah, and it, it is, it's a matter of, of what, whether the building makes it or not. I mean, I mean, that was the case with my building in Council Grove, I mean, it was, and then they, for a very long time. And, yeah. Your, your downtown's a lot more interesting than in those places, I think. People are looking, there's marketability and authenticity, you know, small town life, actual community. And that's why I live in a small town, so there's, there's value in that, and people are interested.
Generational thing too, people under thirty?
Young people like us.
With, with the Upper Story housing, super popular.
Yeah, yeah, they want, they want something they can't, you know, anybody can go to Manhattan, you know, and get a Cracker Bugs apartment, but, yeah, people like to have that character, so.
Okay, if there's no other questions.
Thank you.
Thanks, thank you.
Thanks for coming, we appreciate it.